Did you catch that? Ross, it's more of a push than a tap.
It's a hard question. It's stupidly sensible change. Right on the top. It's a tap. I don't know why it's so early.
Okay, I will call this meeting to order. Can we get a roll call for attendance? Sure. Commissioner Lisk is absent. Commissioner Oyster, here. Commissioner Nelson, here. Petricelli.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Mayor Blair.
Here.
And Sheriff Kristen Martik.
Here. So we spoke about possibly changing the order and doing the work plan first, but you said that. I'll leave it up to you. Okay, and TJ is currently with us.
TJ is currently with us.
And that shouldn't take much time, and then we can see if that applicant is going to arrive, give it a few minutes. So I propose that we do change the order and do the work session first with the work plan 2026. I apologize to those who are here on time, but it won't take very long. So we're going to quickly do this work plan. Thank you.
Okay, so we already know what ongoing projects we have, and those are on the screen. So affordable housing regulations, that's chapter seven, section seven. The master plan update, we completed the review.
It turned off when you looked at. Got it.
And then the housing needs assessment is underway, scheduled to be updated mid-November. And then another part of our strategic plan 2025 was me looking into amendment to PC term lengths. So that was something on there for me to do, which I have done, and we can talk about later. But for now, I kind of want to focus the attention on the matrix that was in your packet that CPS had put together a couple years ago. That relates to a lot of the land use considerations and updates to the code. Because that will be CPS's focus mostly for 2026. So I want to figure out what your priorities are as a commission. And kind of give TJ some direction, and I'm going to let him sort of go through that. If it sounds good with you, TJ.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thanks, Angie. Yeah, so I'm just looking at this here. Okay. Yeah, so as you probably remember, we did the original code update, I'll call it in 2023. With that, we had this list of future land use considerations of items that we wanted to look at or needed to further evaluation afterwards. And last year, we took a stab at a few of those. One was the affordable housing, one was parking rigs, and one was ADUs. And so what we're here tonight to try to figure out, or at least get some feedback from you all, is what level of interest is there on the remaining items? Jackson. Sorry, school just let out. And so Angie has these up here in general. Yeah, affordable housing has kind of been addressed. Some of these have been addressed, some have not. So I guess I've wanted to kind of open it up, and we can get into more detail on those if you want to, but see if there was some guidance on specifically what we might be working on from a code standpoint next year, if anything. And also recognizing that the town has a large work plan for next year, including all the work that Angie is going to be doing on the comp plan, housing of the housing plan, action plan, sorry, and other components of those. So I think I'll just leave it at that for the moment, and just let some dialogue go on.
This matches the matrix. They're all the headers of the sections, the groups. And then I've just shortened the language, so you know what we're looking at is the same as the matrix in packet. And again, a lot of these have happened or have been started or have been discussed before I got here. So I'd love to hear what priorities you have, or what you're interested in for 2026.
Are there ones that would be? I mean, we've touched on all these things over time. But are there ones that, like, if we finish them or readdress them, we would get a bigger benefit for our time? And as far as impact to the town in a positive manner? No, TJ just said, what else?
Yeah, Angie, you want to? I don't know if you want to answer that or you want me to?
I mean, there's definitely some, like, technical cleanup that would help make enforcing the code easier. But yeah, those are largely just small cleanup things. A lot of these on the list require quite a bit of discussion at the planning commission level. So it's hard to say without being part of that discussion, and I don't know if some of it's already happened.
Yeah, I'm a little puzzled because here in TJ's memorandum, it talks about parking standards, which I thought we worked through extensively.
TJ's memo wasn't attachment to my memo. So that was from last year, and that has been completed.
Okay.
So I was kind of giving you.
And then I'm looking at streets, blocks, and alleys, and I'm like slower speeds and adequate drainage. Planning Commission?
Yeah, this is on the CPS future land use considerations table that's in your packet, that large matrix.
Because that seems like it would be Marshals and Public Works, not Planning Commission, so a little confused on that one.
So it's about street design.
Street design, how it affects slower speeds.
Yeah, so it could include landscaping, it could include curving, sign, cross-section, it could include sidewalks, on-street parking.
I mean, prices.
Traffic on the bases are huge.
Yeah, I find that real interesting, and I also find the zoning and land use bullet point real interesting. Because Angie and I have been talking about some stuff, and I think there's some uses by right and the uses, conditional uses, that probably need some adjustment, especially in industrial. So I think looking at that would be fruitful for us, maybe to scrub all the different zones again on a permanent basis and see if there's anything that jumps out at us. I know a couple of things that I would like to talk about.
Yeah, I've noticed, like, both stored parking spots on the street and, you know, campers that would go into the back of a pickup truck stored on the street. It seems a little stretching it. I mean, it's nice that we don't have super strict enforcement, but it also doesn't seem like it should be taken advantage of.
So some of those conversations could naturally occur during the master plan update stuff?
Well, but then we're updating the master plan, we're not updating the land.
Right, but at least some of the conversations will potentially align. So you might find that, like, a certain topic does seem super important to you while we're doing the master plan update. So I understand this is like a hard ask to get your feedback on the 2026 work plan, but we do put together a strategic plan every year. It kind of guides, like, where our priorities.
And to see what your priorities are from the planning department as to what you think would be the most important things to tackle first that would, you know, clean up our code and move us forward as opposed to, like, our personal interests. So I would like to see your take on it first, and then, you know, we can come back and say, oh, you put that at the bottom, we think that's important. But I think that the first step at it should come from you.
I will.
Can I just throw out, I think if you go back to that list, more the kind of higher level thing that I've always felt really strongly about and think should be guiding all of our work in all these areas, which is trying to streamline our process, make it easier for people to do things that we want them to do. And especially when it comes to affordable housing. If we have your average Joe wanting to build a home, the last thing we want to do is overburden them with regulations and paperwork. So I really have always felt something, we have to be constantly looking at our code and trying to find ways to make things more streamlined. And it tends to, from my experience, that tends to kind of heighten your workload at the staff level sometimes. And that's hard, especially when we have such a lean staff, but it's just, it's vitally important in a 1977. The average person can still afford to build here, given the property values. So I think that's really important.
And I think Angie and Jordan were very proactive about that in the landscaping updates just recently, about not just addressing the things that came from the state level, but also just, how does this work for people? Is this clear? Can they understand it? So I think we're headed in that direction, and we should continue.
I kind of want to second what John said. I agree with what he said 100%. I think in the same sense, I think we should maybe even discuss and try to maybe quantify some of the incentives that we would offer for deed restricted apartments. So that we're not, we can make that cleaner and clearer to make our incentives more obvious and more digestible and less distant, less hard to find.
Didn't our affordable housing work that we did went to council, and now it's on hold while we do some community outreach and stuff? Is that correct?
Yes, so we brought it to council as like a work session, not the ordinance introduction, and asked for some direction on next steps, which they gave us, which included doing some direct referrals to housing agencies. So I did that and got some feedback. Nothing that changed any of the language. I've had a couple of conversations with planning consultants about it as well. And again, that feedback, I did, I went down some rabbit holes, but it didn't actually change any of the language that I had drafted. And then the other piece was showing examples of how the regs would apply to different types of development. So I have a presentation that goes through all of that. I just haven't presented it yet. And the third piece was doing some additional public outreach. So we're just trying to find a time to schedule that, and I'm thinking maybe it'll be later in October. But that remains to be seen.
Okay.
And then I was trying to figure out if the examples are something that I do at the public outreach event, like give the examples there or if I give them in a forum like this, or both. So, yeah, that's where that's at. But I guess, let me skip one slide ahead to JHP dot line, just to kind of go through again what's already underway. It's kind of on this slide here, and then some of the things we can think about. Some of the things that we can think about for 2026, and that I'm already thinking about, are this Prop 123 fast track, which is just what you were talking about, John, with kind of having something a little more formal that's adopted by the town. It talks about a streamlined process for affordable housing developments. And there is an early adoption incentive from DOLA that is available to us. So this is actually something that I'm hoping we can actually get in place before the end of the year. So it won't really play into 2026 too much, but a lot of the other Prop 123 compliance will be part of what I'm looking into for 2026. And then I just want to touch on the housing action plan really quickly, because we were funded in part for this work through DOLA's HPLN grant, which is also funding our housing needs assessment currently. The grant expiration is January of 2027, and then the deadline for a housing action plan is actually January 2028. And I don't know if we're hoping to do it right away or what your appetite is for that. And then there's going to be some state mandated regulations that are popping up here and there, as we've already seen. So those are just a couple of other pieces that are.
I would say they get working on that sooner than later, so that you're not up against a deadline at the other end.
The housing action plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, and if we know, you know, what are the requirement parts of it?
Yeah.
So we know at what speed we need to address each piece.
Yeah, DOLA just released guidance in July, so they've been kind of rolling out all of this, like, guidance and then associated funding with the guidance. So we applied for the regional housing needs assessment and then the local housing action plan through the same grant, and we were funded a certain amount. So that's good to hear that you're interested in kind of pursuing that right away. But a lot of the materials that we need to, well, we need to utilize the housing needs assessment to inform the housing action plan.
It's not appropriate.
Yeah, it's like a slow rollout, but it would have been helpful to have the guidance before we put together the RFP and did all this stuff.
Sure.
Yeah, the slow rollout is happening. As long as you've updated.
I've got a question on the housing needs assessment. I was really happy to be involved in participating in that. But you said it's going to be completed in mid-November, but we probably miss our meeting, and then we usually don't have a December meeting. Just without the schedule, we can fit a little better. But years past, we always skipped on December, went to January for meetings. So I guess my question is, we have time to digest it and talk about it as a commission, or are we just going to tee it up to the council, let's see where it is?
So their next deliverable is due at the end of next week? And I can just touch base with them on if I can share it with you all, or if I need to wait until it's the finalized housing needs assessment, and they want to do a full resumption, I will let you know.
I think the thing to say, Jack, is that if it doesn't make it for our November meeting, let's consider scheduling a special meeting in earlier in December so that we're not, so we can get informed on it, we're not holding it up.
I'm really excited about it, on a personal one, but is that assessment being done for council or for us or for everybody? Are we involved in it? I don't understand how it's going to be digested by the town.
Yeah, I think what would be, like, my ideal situation is I would be able to send it out to all of you way ahead of time and then schedule it for a town council presentation and invite you all to come see that presentation or join via Zoom. I would hope that the consultants would be here in person, but I haven't verified any of that with them quite yet. So does that sound like something you'd be interested in, instead of having them present it at two different?
Oh, yeah, I'm just very interested in everything about it, so I'll be in all the meetings.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but if you have time for it, I guess.
Would anything you want to send us to digest?
Sure, we got it. It's how we're headed.
Yeah, yeah.
Like a two-week period? What's the ideal?
Two weeks is preferable.
Two weeks is fair. Okay.
To your comment, Jack, I think because we moved up the planning commission to Wednesday after council, I think we shouldn't have any problem doing what we're seeing. Yeah, that's what I mean, historically, I'm so used to the December meeting, because I didn't realize as I'm saying. Changed the schedule. Not only those posts. Those were the first week of January, it creates some timing. Yeah, I think, looking at my calendar, I don't see why we can't just go ahead and go with the case.
Since it's not so late into the holidays.
We have TJ just for a few more minutes, so I wanted to jump back to that matrix, just in case there's a couple of things he wants to comment on or if he has an opinion on what's most important. And if not, I can comment again.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, back to, I think, I can't remember who made the comment, maybe it was John, the comment about make sure everything's clean. I think that was seconded and third by everybody else, too. Just going back, I think when we did the original code update in 2023, we had a limited budget, and we had a limited scope. That was really organization and focused on process. There are a lot of ties between sections that are not there, and to reiterate what Angie said earlier, it's causing problems in the administration of the code. We knew about that, but it's also been now three years, or we're into three years since that, that we haven't done some of those cleanups with other projects that are going on. So I would strongly urge, you know, we were talking with Pam and Preston about budget and stuff, and I don't know what the budget is, we haven't been able to get there, but generally speaking, you know, somewhere in the range of $20,000, $30,000 to $50,000 would get most of these items completed, at least to the point of technical updates. And what I might suggest is something along the lines of, because there are some big conversations that need to be had. I don't disagree with that, and I won't disagree with that. But I don't also want to throw the things that need to get done to clean up the code, to make it simpler to use, simpler to administer, and simpler to understand. Kick it down again for these larger conversations. So in essence, it's things that are, you know, if we could do what we did last time, if you remember that, where we started with looking at all of these in a work session early January and starting to refine that schedule and scope to kick off the, identify what could be done quick, what would require some additional conversation. And maybe what we do, rather than coming up with a, you know, a specific project list, I think we just call it code updates. We start with a kickoff meeting or a work session in January and go through each of these outstanding items with some suggestions that, hey, these are pretty simple to hit, and we could do them generally, I'll call it administratively. I don't mean administratively from an approval standpoint, but that they're not major community dialogue conversations. But they're things that we need to do to clean up the code, and we can get through that pretty quick, whittle things away. That will then refine this list that hasn't been evaluated in a couple of years, to your point, Michelle. You know, some of these things were talked about, some of them were not. Parts of some of them were. So we could focus on revising this list and getting those high points to make the code more usable and functional for everybody that's using it and administering it.
Yes, that's perfect, because just looking at this list, I'm like, what? What are you asking us? So yes, that's, let's do that. Thank you.
Does that sound good?
Yes.
Yeah, anyone else?
Yeah. And TJ, in favor?
If I'm going to say I.
I'm excited.
TJ and CPS would be kind of leading that sort of workshop, because they're more familiar with what has happened, what all those code connections are, what needs to happen. But obviously, I'm participating too, just letting you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, the beauty, you know, we now have Angie, that the last time we did all of this, we did not, right, in 2024? And so what we've talked about, Angie and I, is that we'll kind of split some of those tasks between long-range current planning. And so we'll do some of those current planning things. She'll do some of the larger, like the master plan and things like that, and we'll be able to get some additional stuff. And I guess the next steps would be we'd have to come up with a budget to fit that, and hopefully, everybody is okay and comfortable with, we'll kind of right-size the budget or the task for the budget and the budget for the task, kind of working through that budgeting process, whatever, you know, council comes up with. You know, and I think maybe the overall goal is to refine that list so that we can get another project list coming out of it to help future conversations.
And council has their budget, first budget work session on October 4th, so that's coming right up.
Correct.
So great.
Probably, and then I think we could talk again, Angie, but I think just generally what I'm hearing is we would put in probably that full ask of $50,000 to do all of these things and see where that goes from the, in the budgeting process.
Great. Do you need anything else from us on this?
I mean, I think that's, Angie, we got the clarity that we're looking for.
Absolutely, thank you.
I have one question for you later on. The bullet points are lodging provisions versus B and B manufactured housing, travel homes. I'm confused about all that.
Exactly. Yeah, and I'll address it with, you know, kind of looking at the same as the, oh, I thought there was something else in here, too. But we did it on ADUs as well, it's a parking, right? There's a whole bunch of stuff. What we want to do is look at all the lodging types in a spectrum and make sure that we have clarity between them. Right now, you have live-work, and you have workforce housing, and you have employee housing. Those are things that we'd never evaluated in that original, and they are kind of, you know, head scratchers when you start trying to figure out which ones they are and which ones apply to what situation. So that's a good example where we'll just say, hey, you know, here's the spectrum, let's clean up those definitions, clean up those terms, and be very clear as to, you know, where the differentiation is between those products.
I understand now. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, TJ. Thanks, TJ.
All right, thanks, everyone. Good to see you.
See you next week.
All right, bye.
Bye.
Okay, thanks for bearing with us. We only had our consult planning consultant there for a few minutes, so that's why we changed the order of things. And I was hoping that the applicant might arrive, but it doesn't appear so. So we will now go into, let me get the terminology correct, the public hearing. An application from, of Garvey subdivision plat, a re-subdivision of Lot 7 of Marie Scott subdivision, and Lot 2 of the Anderson Minor subdivision. Town of Ridgeway, location Marie Street and Amelia Street, address 383 South Amelia Street. Residential zone, applicant Keith Garvey, owners Keith Garvey and TBD Marie Street LLC. And I will hand that over to. Oh, yes? Oh, is the applicant online?
Somebody joined through their cell phone and then seemingly left.
Okay, so I will now hand that over to our senior planner, Angie Kump.
Thank you. Right, so this is a public hearing. The process is here on the screen, just as a reminder. And for this re-subdivision, planning commission is making a recommendation to town council. Town council is the decision-making body. So I'll go through my presentation and then questions. All right. So Michelle ran through a lot of this background already. TBD Marie Street is an LLC owned by Keith Garvey, so he is the owner of both lots. They are adjacent lots that are abutting each other, and I'll show you quite a few different maps and ways to view them. The properties are both zone residential. And there's an existing home on proposed Lot C, which is 383 South Amelia Street. There's also a couple of accessory structures. There's a shed, a greenhouse, and there's a tiny home that seems to be on a trailer. The adjacent lot, or at least the back part of this lot, it's hard to tell in person, but the greenhouse and shed will need to be removed at the subdivision because they're encroaching on an easement that's being established with the subdivision. So here is an image of the requested subdivision plat. It has the shed, the greenhouse, the existing two-story home. And then there's also a storage log cabin is what it's labeled as on the plat. So it's showing all of that. Lot C is about 10,432 square feet. Lot B is 10,575 square feet. And Lot A, which is vacant, is 13,089 square feet. There is no additional development proposed at this time. Each lot will need water and sewer tap fees paid in full, and then excise tax needs to be paid for each of the lots. Ahead of reporting a final plat. And the utility plan is required to ensure that the lots created are serviceable. So that played into the extension of an existing easement. But ended up, the Lot 7 Marie Scott Village subdivision has been extended all the way to the Hill Street with this plat. From the master plan, future land use map, the area is designated as single-family neighborhood. In single-family neighborhoods, the density is two to eight dwelling units per acre. It is primarily used for single-family homes and duplexes. So this is kind of our, one of our lower-density neighborhoods. So this is kind of our, one of our lower density uh neighborhoods. And then based on the review of the proposed development and the narrative that the applicant has submitted, which is based in. He's intending to build a single-family home on each of the lots, um this fits with the master plan goals and policies. Um, one of the goals is calm dash two. Encourage diversity of housing options that meet the needs of residents, this is creating slightly smaller lots that are very consistent with the Marie Scott neighborhood. Sizes, um and then support vibrant, diverse and safe and well-connected neighborhoods. So dimensional standards, I had these included in, early on in your staff report, but then I included a table and. Some of the numbers are incorrect in the table, so um you can look at the screen and it'll tell you the correct. Dimensional standards for each of the lots, each of the proposed lots. Um, which I also kind of just went through, but the minimum lot size in residential is six thousand square feet, these are significantly larger. The max lot coverage is fifty percent, um that will be determined with the building permit for lot A and B. And lot C is, is less than fifty percent, uh it also has the setbacks listed here, which will be reviewed at building permit.
Got a question on setbacks, was the existing council lot A made setbacks?
It does, there's a porch. Yeah, uh there's a porch that does um get into the front setback by like a few inches.
Okay.
Um, but we could technically consider that like a roof eave, uh because it's not. Part of the str- structure and the foundation, so that is something that I'll show you on the, the main plat.
It was also on your previous table, that you were showing.
Yeah, so it's fifteen feet is the front setback, and I think that the porch encourages, it's like fourteen point eight feet or something on the plat. Uh, alright, so this is an aerial view that kind of gives you a better idea of what the property layout is here, um the existing home. And driveway are shown, and then the accessory structures are all kind of grouped in that area near the front of. Uh, lot, lot B where somebody would want to put a driveway, so those need to be removed anyway, um. And then lot A is vacant. So this is the existing home and driveway, and the driveway is off of South Amelia. This is a view from Marie Street looking southeast. And it shows some driveway locations on here, these are exhibits that were put together on that, but.
Well, what I was noticing in the application was the greenhouse is barely in the easement, but if you look at it, it's just if. It's not really a substantial structure, it's like the frame of maybe what used to be a greenhouse, so it's since it's. Going, it's good that that easement gets cleaned up and the shed is very much in the easement, um which I think is. Uh, uh not only a setback, but utility easement along Amelia, um sorry, Marie Street.
The utility easement is ten feet wide and the setback is fifteen feet, so it really encourages in the setback, but it. Somewhat.
So those will both be removed?
Yes.
It's interesting that photo also shows the tidying on the. Um, recent on the plat.
Well, it's, it's mobile, it's on a, it's on wheels.
Like a shepherd's.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's still, still on the lot.
Um, the applicant chose to include some driveway locations on the exhibit, but those will be established with. Uh, and this is Marie Street looking west, or sorry, South Amelia, uh looking west. So it gives you an idea of the general, I realize it kind of how Philly is there too, so. Okay. Um, so here's the plat map, I don't know if it's easier to see there or just in your packet, but. Page one is in your packet as well, it includes all the signature blocks needed. But I just wanted to include this, that in the presentation, so I can show you the areas of steep slopes. Uh, and then the, the utility easement I kind of touched on. Uh, lot C will continue to utilize the existing water and sewer taps while lot A and B will be served by new water and sewer taps. Um, that connect to the line in Marie Street. All those fees will be required, required as part of this re-subdivision, uh but the installation and connection happens at building permit. And there are some fees that have been previously paid with recreation at Marie Scott Village, so. Um, that'll all be worked out with the applicant and clerk's office and myself. And then uh electric service, the applicant received a will serve letter from San Miguel Power Association. Um, and then attempted to get one from Black Hills Energy also, but has not heard back, so um. That, this goes to them as a referral agency and we didn't get comments back from them either, so um. Depending on what they do during building permit, they'll decide if they want to pull um gas or not. So the application was forwarded to referral agencies on August sixth, with a due date of August twenty eighth. And all referral comments have been adequate, they addressed, uh the only real substantive one had to do with the slopes. And um we addressed that with the plat note, that basically explains our landscaping regulations to. Try to keep existing vegetation in place on, on steep slopes.
Well, and I think the applicant mentioned in their letter that that's also anchoring that steep hillside.
Yes.
So it's could not be in their best interest to take it down.
Exactly, so just a, a moment for education on that, direct to people through our code. Um, alright, so these are the approval criteria for re-subdivision. Um, we have received, sorry, I'm gonna go back, we have received one public comment for this uh. Application, so I am actually gonna read it into the record if that's comfortable with everybody, yeah, okay. Um, the letter is from Jake Neese, who is resident. Um, he says, hello Angie, I'm writing in my personal capacity about the Garvey subdivision. I'm the next door neighbor and have a couple of questions and concerns, and I plan to attend, attend in person as well. There appears to be a structure missing from the plat, which is some kind of tiny house that is oc- that is occupied as a residence. It's southwest of the greenhouse and is not the log cabin with covered porch shown on the plat. Um, I do not know what the plumbing situation is for the occupied tiny house. And I would like to know what the plan and sanitation situation is for this potentially unplugged residence in the subdivision. While not directly related to subdivision of lots, I would like to ensure compliance with Tom codes. Specifically eleven dash one six and eleven dash one eleven. Regarding dog, dogs at large. The dog living with the resident in the tiny house is routinely at large, chases deer, sometimes challenges me and my dog on my driveway. Has snapped at my dog while walking in the street and up my driveway and regularly comes onto my property poop. The dog's owner has not been receptive to request to restrain the dog, or is not anywhere around while the dog is at large. I've spent the, this is a separate point, I've spent the last seven years battling invasive weeds on my lot and lots on all three sides of me. Um, all of the lots have had absentee landowners until now. Um, and with new activity on the slot, I request that, I'd like to request that the owner monitor and mitigate the property. For white top, which is class P, cheap grass, which is class C. Fine meat, which is class C, and other invasives, especially with the potential new soil disturbance.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, sure. Um, so that was the only public comment that we've received, it didn't make it into your packet, we got it earlier today. Uh, and then the approval criteria here on the screen are also in your packet. And with that, uh the staff recommendation is for approval of the Garvey re-subdivision, finding that the criteria. Um, are met with one condition that has to do with paying the remaining fees. Um, for, for taps and access taps, and then alternatively, the planning commission can recommend denial. Um, add conditions, add recommended conditions or continue the item to a future meeting. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, and just to reiterate, we are recommending this for, if we do recommend this for approval, it's, it's. Recu- whoop, whoop, recommendation to council, we are confirming ourselves. Go ahead.
Uh, is the new lot gonna be part of the Marie Scott subdivision or? Or, um, is the, I'm assuming the Marie Scott subdivision has the HOA and stuff like that, so.
Their HOA was dissolved.
Okay.
Let me go back to this, the plat, because it kind of gives you an idea of what's going on. So lot seven of Marie Scott Village subdivision is a little bit of a funky shape.
Yeah.
And then the existing um lot one of the Anderson Minor subdivision is a perfect square. So in a sense, this is almost splitting that lot one of the Anderson subdivision in half. To be a little more consistent size-wise with what's going on with the Marie Scott Village subdivision and cleaning up that funky lot line. Uh, but it is creating an, an extra lot, it's two lots to three. Uh, hopefully that answered your question, but they, they don't have an existing HOA.
I'm sure as if the new lot hadn't been accepted, the old HOA would have, HOA is dissolved, it's a non-issue.
Any other?
Yeah, I'm, what's the staff's take on this timing on?
Um, I did not know it was occupied until I received this letter and I have forwarded it to um our. Code compliance person, uh. That's all I have right now, just cuz it's pretty new information for me, but it is on a trailer, um.
Is do, do.
I don't know.
Was it appropriate to mention it in condition, I attempted to add a condition to. Motion to approve that, say that, that the tiny home needs to be addressed or something like that, do you think that?
Uh.
Your take is this point or not?
So any conditions imposed have to be related to Tom standards. We do have Tom standards around like temporary occupancy of recreational vehicles, which I don't know if this would fall under that category. But people can live in, in recreational vehicles or travel homes for up to a year, only if they have a building permit for the lot. That they're constructing or working on, and then that uh recreational vehicle has to be on the same site. So let's say he pulled a building permit as soon as this gets um. If this gets.
Right.
Um, then it would, you would technically be in compliance.
I think it's a code enforcement issue, you know, and I'm not commission, something we're addressing here.
Just cuz we're on, on yourself, I have a car of the. It's not, should not be occupied, it's not.
Correct, unless you have an active building permit.
I think there's, you can occupy it for less than thirty days.
No, I think it's, I think it's longer if you're, if you're building.
No, but there used to be provision that would allow people to have.
Your friends have come to visit.
And were in their driveway for.
Okay.
You list guest house.
Is it a, is it a temporary use permit or it's sort of just like a, oh yeah, you're good for thirty days?
I doubt it was, was uh, uh, part of the code, it may have been eliminated. Okay, my memory goes back farther than.
Yeah, to come back to the issue, I think it's code enforcement issue, not part of this application.
Uh, I can look into that for sure, but.
Good.
Not, to my knowledge, if it's, if it's an RV occupied. It's, it's just allowed with an active building.
Yeah, and it's not even an RV.
Well, yeah, a, a travel home.
I'd be interested to hear the follow-up on that, when you look into it, uh just for general knowledge, not, not in. Not a progress with this.
I'm gonna try to look into it now too, well.
Okay.
And maybe while you guys are discussing.
Uh, but along that is, line is the log cabin also an AD and is it permitted? No, it's set in the packet that has electricity and it does not have plumbing and it's currently used as storage. Okay, thank you, I must have forgotten that. Um, so we're just looking at the subdivision, the subdivision first, you guys have any questions for staff?
I had a question about the steep slopes, um. Can you just show on that map like which part, if ever.
So all the red is the thirty percent, there is a thirty percent um slope, which is what we're requiring them to. Kind of show as like a hazard, um area, but. I think our landscape regulations say something about slopes at even twenty percent should um remain as much. Remain in vegetative cover, like original vegetation.
And that was addressed in the letter that you're building on the flattest part of the lots, which of course are up against the street. Yeah, and that would be, that would be part of the building permit process also, okay.
And there's a plat note about the removal of vegetation on steep slopes. And it directs people to our landscaping regulations, which is plat note ten here, thank you.
Ross, do you have anything?
No.
Um, then I guess there's not a presentation by the applicant because they're not here and um. I don't know where that stands, but I would think that applicants should be encouraged to be here, obviously it's not required, but it's certainly helpful.
Yeah, he intended to be here if he can make it work.
Yeah. Um.
Where's it work?
Do we have any other questions before I open it up to public comment?
Yeah.
Um, I will now open it to public comment, if you step up, uh if you have a comment, please step up to the microphone. State your name and address, um and let us know what your comments.
My name is Abby Lang and I live on Marie Street, lived there about nineteen years, it is really not, um. It has not become a, a community, it's more like a location. Um. We have no information about the subdivision other than a little yellow sign. That I saw because I walk that street twice a day with my dog, okay, and I saw it the other day. But we have none of that information, but I, 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 maybe I'm sort of naive about um public hearings. I didn't realize all the information and the subdivision had been totally approved already, so it's like, what's the?
You know, it has not been approved and the packet became available online on Friday. Um, so that would be what the sign was referring to, was an upcoming meeting where that.
Get some, some data for new?
I can give you the entire staff packet, uh printed or emailed, however you like it.
Um, printed would be, would be nice, if you could look at it in, in, in a, in an array.
Yeah, if you don't mind hanging out after the meeting, I can.
Pardon?
If you don't mind hanging out after the meeting, I can.
Oh, yeah, sure, fine, uh that, we would, we, I feel we need more information, it's a small street, it's just a circular street. Now you're gonna, when you make it into three lots, you've got now like minimally two more cars. Of each lot, and a number of people seem to have a lot, I don't know, we don't know the people who are gonna move in. Um, you said something about dogs, but I actually could not hear you at all, I didn't know if it was worth, whether I should even ask at this point.
Sorry, we received a public comment today about a dog that lives at the property that's causing issues.
Was a wetting issue?
It was causing issues.
Oh, causing issue, okay.
It was just running free.
Oh, oh yeah, there's a lot, there seem to be a lot more dogs in Ridgeway running free as the population is increased. If we would like, in, in order to make a more coherent comment, I think we need, I need more information. That's why I'd like some copies.
Okay. Thank you. Hi Jake, come on up.
Hi Jake Neese, two sixty-seven Marie Street, um just here in my personal capacity as the next door neighbor and so. Uh, Angie read my comments and um don't really have any fundamental disagreement with the um subdivision. But just wanted to make sure um all the i's and d's were crossed. Um, just since um I, I didn't know what the status of that tiny house was, cuz I haven't gone over there and. You know, poked and prodded at it, um in the seven, eight years that I've been there, uh I haven't, haven't seen it move. So maybe it is capable of moving and doesn't belong on the plat, but it's, it's been there stationary the whole time and. Person who's been living there has been there for a year or two now, um so it's not really like a thirty-day temporary stay. Friends kind of thing, and um, uh, yeah, just um. I'm pretty curious about the, the sanitation issue with that, if that is not plumped. Which I suspect that it's not based on the um yellow snow that could cimulate.
I assume from the packet, uh, there, there was a new arrival on site. I assume from the packet, uh, there, there was a new arrival on site. You said it's been there for some time now?
It's been there since I built my house, starting in twenty seventeen, so that, that's a tiny home thing has been there since at least then. So just adding that and you have my comment in writing.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Anybody online? Nobody's online. I will now close public comment. Uh, anything, any other, uh, discussion up here or concerns?
Not as far as planning goes.
I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the, um, subdivision, uh, into three units. Uh, do you have a warning that you want me to use?
Yeah.
Thank you. I move to recommend approval of the Garvey, Garvey sub, re- resubdivision. Um, finding that the criteria we set forth in RMC seven five two three three. Then that the condition that, um, prior to the town recording the resubdivision flat. At the Ray County Clerk and Recorder's Office, all signatures shall be obtained and remaining water and sewer fees, tap fees and excess tax for all lots shall be.
Seven.
Um, all those in favor?
I'm.
Anyone opposed?
I would like to want to have a discussion.
Oh. Alright, well, let's hold that vote.
Okay. Yeah, I know we were gonna ask if we were gonna talk and was ready for a motion. That would have been a time to say, go ahead.
You just missed the opportunity, this is.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Um, can I take a moment to just explain the process to our public?
Yeah.
Um, so I, um, just want to explain how the process works, so the, um, the notice, the sign on the street, um, is it thirty days? How many, how, what is the notice period? Ten days, but we put it up two weeks before.
So it was up for two weeks and that's an opportunity to contact the town staff to ask what's going on. Um, and it also would state on the sign when the meeting's being held. Um, and whether it be planning commission or town council, the packet is always available online on the town website. The Friday before the meeting and both the council meeting and the planning commission are on Wednesdays. Um, so that's, it's available on that Friday, um, online, so you can read the information and there's still time to go come to town hall and ask any questions or send an email or make comments, so. I didn't want you to think we were ignoring, um, your requests for information, but because this met all of the criteria and there were no major objections or things missed, it was just appropriate to approve it.
It's my naive take.
Yeah, yeah, and as far as the other concerns that were voiced in the letter, that has been forwarded to the, to code enforcement, to the building department. And so those will also be addressed. They just weren't part, they didn't affect this application. So I just wanted to make it clear to the public that we hear you, we're not ignoring your input, but we have to focus on what we're asked to focus on. And then that other stuff can be handled appropriately by whomever it's supposed to be handled by. Just wanted to clarify, so I didn't want you guys to think that we're not listening.
Thank you.
And so even though we approved it tonight, it hasn't been approved yet and it goes to town council. So if you would like to go to the next town council to make your comments, you can.
Which is different than it normally is. Town council meeting is usually the second Wednesday of the month. And next month, because of a lot of conflicts, it's going to be the first Wednesday instead of October first will be the council meeting where this will be heard and then approved or not. So if there are further concerns, that would be a place to voice them. And, uh, we may, there may be more feedback on the other things that came up at that time. And you don't, you don't have to be there in person. You can also write a letter. Um, you can ask staff, uh, questions anytime you want. Um, it's entirely up to you. Your participation and viewpoint are always encouraged.
Sure.
Thanks. Um, so that finishes that item and we've already done the work session, so we're just plotting right along. Um, I need a motion for the approval of the August twentieth minutes.
So.
Second. All those in favor, do you want to say anything? All those in favor?
Alright.
I, anyone of? Thank you. Anyone else need to abstain? So the motion passes unanimously, the most motion passes with Jack abstaining. Uh, other business is updates from planning staff.
You have any? Lee, if you don't mind, can I introduce you to the planning commission? Hi, Lee is the new executive assistant. Is that what it is?
Okay, executive assistant with the town of Ridgeway, so assisting Preston and doing other work in the, in the Perks Office. Um, I don't know if you want to introduce yourself, you're welcome to. If you don't want to, it's okay.
Welcome.
Yeah, good to see those of you who I know, um, before in this, I worked for West Ridge Lawfare Council, also worked for Second Chance Main Society, running grants to the special events, then charing volunteers. Worked for Uniquity Partnership and, uh, San Miguel Way City Innocence and Safe Cross Working Group. And I've been a resident of Richmond since two thousand and seven.
Well, we welcome your board.
Thanks.
Really happy to have you.
Glad to have you.
Thank you. Any other announcements from staff? No other announcements at this time. I would like to acknowledge, acknowledge and thank Julie for being your secretary. She's always sits there so quietly and I wanted you to know that we appreciate you being here, so thank you. Um, updates from planning commission members. Do we have any?
Uh, no, I will, um, I have a Ray County meeting, uh, this week and I think next week. And then, um.
True.
Well, some is just legal training and orientation, some is a work session, so I'll report back on that. Um, and.
You're actually on the platform?
Yes.
She's on both.
I hear an update on what happened with the town. I didn't hear that. I wasn't able to attend the town council meeting. But it looks like you guys talked about, um, some of the things that, uh, the planning commission was part of the planning commission, which was the landscaping.
It was, it was introduced. And there was a little discussion about whether or not, um, our, uh, probation of artificial turf. Uh, was the right way to go, so it actually passed three to two, not frustrating. Interesting to see what that involves. Are you meeting next month?
My understanding is that wasn't passed again from the state.
Well, but that, that actually is more complicated. Do you want, do you want to talk about?
Um, the state is requiring, or, yeah, requiring that local governments don't allow the installation of, um, synthetic turf on commercial properties. Uh, or any like street right of ways or anything like that, but individuals on their residential properties could still, uh, install artificial turf per the state regulations.
Oh, so they, they were talking about that we shouldn't allow the, that.
What I drafted says that we shouldn't allow.
What is originally, this is town to?
Um, the, so the Senate bill talks a lot about the negative environmental impacts of the the synthetic turf and the microplastics and, um, shutting into water systems and whatnot. Uh, but it doesn't really actually then apply all of that knowledge to residential properties.
I think that
If that makes sense.
Throw in my, my two cents. I think that, that Angie's totally right. They, they, they talk about it. They, the state statute actually prohibited in this is non-functional public, public. The reason they didn't actually formally make it apply residential is because it would have been a big handwork. No matter what we were composed to, which is kind of what we're seeing at town council. Um, so two of the counselors felt like they're, one of them said something about a friend of hers who, um, whose child has serious allergies and they feel like going where their kid could go outside is something with that artificial turf. I don't know that that's totally true, but I mean, there are other non-allergenic landscaping materials that could work as opposed to artificial turf, but that, so.
There was a move to, moved to, from real grass to artificial to save water. So it's like, well.
Well, and, and that's it was brought up that, that new field at the high school is, is artificial turf. It's, and it's very fancy and it's gonna be incredibly well maintained and if it, if it fails, they'll have to replace it. I think it's, there was some artificial turf at a property right behind, um, eight hundred and sixty-six for a month. And it's just.
It's still there.
Still there? It's over there. It's kind of buried. It's, it's obviously deteriorating to a large degree and I thought I saw that they were tearing up participate, but, um.
Maybe part of the, some of them.
Yeah, um, so I mean, I, my main thing was the whole thing behind the state regs was the negative environmental effects of artificial turf.
So, so it passed, not, we can't.
Yeah, correct. The first reading, first reading.
Well, it was not there.
You were there.
But adoption consideration is, is that's second reading.
Second reading, it's not the first.
And that would be a book.
Hot topic. I mean, I wasn't there, so the three to two.
So Ben, you, I might get to vote.
Right. Which.
That's rare. It is rare.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
So everyone hasn't know what we're talking about. At town council, I only get to vote if there's a time. We almost never have a time. We have, I'd say over ninety percent of our voters are unanimous. But we happen to have a unusual three to two vote and Michelle wasn't there, so she had cast hers with the nays. I would have actually been. We'll see what happens next month on the book.
Stay tuned.
Yeah. And I think that's the main thing for it.
Yeah.
So if it passed, that would not be allowed in commercial, but allowed in this. No. Correct.
Would not be allowed.
Then off the way, the way that, way the draft amendment is written, it's not allowed in either functional or.
So if you have it now, does it grandfather? Yes.
Um, any other updates from the commission? Got anything?
I want to talk off the record, so I have a question.
Um, I think that, that wraps it up for us. I don't have anything. Anyone else? Last chance. Meeting is adjourned.